Well, thank you, Cindy. We are at the Access Aid Studios. I would like to welcome our listening audience to Meet the Candidates, the first of our 1992 broadcasts, and this is the time of the year for school board elections, and we are happy to have with us four of the six candidates who will be running for the Montague School Board. And again, we are at the Access Aid Studio. We have some people in the audience here. I'd like to remind the audience that there are two fire exits, one in the door in which you came in, another towards the back. Both exits are clearly marked. By the way, for those members of the public who are here, we will be accepting written questions later in the program. There are pieces of paper on the table. If you have a written question, bring them up in front of me, and we will screen the questions and ask the questions later. Tonight, we have candidates Michael Poliselli and Nancy Hollerin, Linda Price, is she here? Linda Price, yes, and Jean Brown. I'd like to welcome all of you. That's not necessarily the order. Or Edwin Mielbeck? Okay. All right, we've got that straightened out. And those are the four candidates who will be joining us tonight. For the questioning tonight, we have from the Tri-State Gazette, I'd like to welcome to our airwaves Christine Sparanza, Kristin Sparanza, sorry, and Tom Petrie, I believe it was. Yeah, I got that name right.
Thank you, Paul.
Tom Petrie of WDLC WTSX News. Our format is similar to what we've had in the past, with the exception of the written questions from the audience later in our program. We'll be having an opening statement of up to two minutes, given in the order of the rotation that was based on a drawing just before we went on the air. Then there'll be questions from our two reporters, sixty-second responses with up to thirty-second rebuttals if any of the candidates desire, and then two-minute closing statements, and that will be after the audience's questions. We're going to start with the number-one candidate, who is Edwin Mielbeck. Mr. Mielbeck, welcome to Meet the Candidates, and you may begin with your opening statement.
Thank you, Paul. For those of you that don't know me, I've been a resident of Montague for over thirty-one years and a property owner. I've decided to run for the school board this year because prior to my retirement from law enforcement, I was not allowed to run for any public office. So this is the reason that I'm running this year. In addition to that, we have, before Montague, a capital expenditure in the neighborhood of five million dollars proposed for, in addition to our grammar school. I haven't spent much time in the school, but recently I've attended several board meetings. My wife also substitutes part-time at the school, and for those of you who are not familiar, the school definitely is overcrowded. And anybody who is not for an addition has not had the opportunity to look at the school and see what the conditions are. However, I don't think that the township and the voters will go for a seventh and eighth grade addition to the school. I've had many parents call me, and I've also spoken to many of the students who attend seventh and eighth grade and have attended seventh and eighth grade in the Port Jervis system. They've expressed to me that they feel that the present Montague school certainly needs additional classroom, but they felt that the seventh and eighth grade education they received, that the Port Jervis High School is certainly adequate and thorough and efficient, that's required by the law. In addition to that, they expressed concern of seventh and eighth being brought to Montague with all the extracurricular activities that are also available here in the Port Jervis system that have been in place for fifty years, and that if Montague were to include that, it wouldn't be able to compete with the Port Jervis system. Thank you.
Edwin Mielbeck, our first candidate. Thank you for your opening statement. We turn now to our second candidate, Linda Price.
My husband and I built our house in Montague approximately six years ago. We have a son who is nine in the third grade in Montague. We also have a daughter who is five and a half, who come the fall will be attending private school, because as far as we are concerned, the standards that we hold are not what the Montague school is presently offering, due basically because of the overcrowding situation. When my son entered kindergarten back in eighty-eight, I was very naive. I believed that with just a little work, we could fix these problems. However, these problems have not been improved. They've deteriorated further. As far as the seventh and eighth grade question is concerned, yes, right now, they are offering a very good curriculum over in Port Jervis, but the same thing is going to happen over there when that same infamous third grade hits there that happened when our kids hit kindergarten. We had total chaos when my son was in kindergarten because of the overcrowding. When they hit seventh grade, they're going to have chaos, because according to Dr. Savick's report, that building is going to be at a hundred and ten percent occupancy. You cannot have a quality curriculum unless you've got a quality facility, because whether we like it or not, facilities generate curriculum. And your basics have to be your reading, writing, and arithmetic. If we have to sacrifice some extracurriculars, I'm sorry, but we have to do it. But we have to provide them with a quality education now. And the only way we can do that now is to plan for five years from now, because it's taken five years to get this far, and we're no closer now than we were five years ago.
Thank you, Linda Price. We turn to our third candidate, Michael Poliselli.
I've been on the board for three years. When I ran three years ago, I felt I could help with the new addition. I worked for a construction company out of Newark. That referendum went down. There's still a need for space for the kids. As far as bringing the seventh and eighth back, it's good to say that we, I mean, no one has said anything bad about the Port Jervis school system. They've done a fine job, and Montague owes them a great debt. But we have a report, we spent a lot of money for, done by a professional and an impartial party, and that report shows that Port Jervis is overcrowded. So to say we're not going to bring the seventh and eighth back is good, but you have to have a solution. We are responsible for those kids over there, and right now, according to that report, they're in an overcrowded situation. And perhaps we're not giving them the best education that we can, and that's our job. I pride myself on making decisions based solely on the facts, and I don't like to bring any personal agenda of mine or anyone else's into that. So I'm running, because I want to continue with the plans for the additional space. And I think we have a good board now, and I'd like to remain a part of that team.
Thank you, Michael Poliselli. Our third candidate for Montague School Board. We turn to our fourth candidate here with us tonight, and that is Jean Brown.
I'd like to base my opening statement on the concept of need. I believe within the community of Montague, there is a tremendous need for education from the standpoint of fundamentals. And we also need to combine those educational fundamentals with what the community can afford as far as its economics. It is also obvious that we do need those modular classrooms. Split session is certainly a terrible idea, and one that, as an educator, I would never want to see. There's also a need for communication within the Port Jervis Board of Education. I think if we look toward the concept of communicating with the Board of Education of Port Jervis, maybe we could make some amends with maybe some of the problems which Montague people may believe there are in that concept. There's also a need for a sensible approach to the school addition. And I think if we look toward the concept of what our community needs and what we can afford, we can make those good judgments and good decisions in a way that will help everyone within the community.
Thank you, Jean Brown. You've heard the four opening statements from our candidates that are with us tonight, the candidates for the Montague Board of Education. This is a live WDLC WTSX News Meet the Candidates broadcast. We are coming to you live from the Access Aid Television Studios, and we thank Access Aid very much for the use of their very fine facilities. We go now to the questions from our panel of reporters. Again, with us tonight are Kristin Sparanza of the Tri-State Gazette, and our first question will be from WDLC WTSX newsman, Tom Petrie. Tom, your question will go first to Michael Poliselli.
Thank you, Paul. Since three of the four candidates said in their opening statements mentioned the seventh and eighth grade being included in any building expansion, let's stay on that hot topic, and that is, Mr. Poliselli, do you see problems with Montague down the road adhering to state-of-New Jersey education standards for the seventh and eighth grade if the students remain being educated in Port Jervis?
I don't, I don't think it would be a problem. We do have the problem that we are in the state of Jersey. And, you know, the curriculum and the whole plan, you know, you're under New York jurisdiction, and I don't think that's a good idea anymore. Whether, you know, Port Jervis has always provided a good education, and I don't want to say anything against that. But I do think it's time we bring them back. I don't think they're getting the best education we can give them there. Based on a report, I mean, that's not my opinion, that's the facts. You'd have to dispute this report that we have, and that would, I think, be ludicrous if we don't follow that report.
Thank you, Michael Poliselli. We turn next to Jean Brown.
I think the problem here is that not being a board member at this moment leaves us, who are now looking to become a board member, in a different position, because we obviously don't have the same information that all board members may be privy to. So for me to make a statement such as Mr. Poliselli made in terms of any kind of report, I am not aware of that report. I would believe that we can certainly see how state mandates and state curriculum changes occur so quickly. For us to say that one curriculum is any better or worse than another is according to the specific moment in which we are dealing with any bit of information. So I would really rather wait to be able to be privy to any information before I make that kind of judgment.
Thank you, Jean Brown. We turn to Edwin Mielbeck.
I would just say to Mike that I didn't have the opportunity to see this report, so I can't make an intelligent evaluation as to the type of education that the children are receiving in Port Jervis. All I'm basing my statement on is the fact that the parents of children that have attended these schools, and some of the students themselves, have indicated to me that they think that the education system in Port Jervis is adequate, and they feel that they wouldn't get the same education and opportunities by going to seventh and eighth grade in Montague as they are presently receiving in the Port Jervis system.
Thank you, Mr. Mielbeck. We turn now to Linda Price.
I have seen this report, and according to the report, they are getting a comparable education. The main problem that Dr. Savick found was with the facilities, not the curriculum. As far as differences state to state, yes, there are differences in that New Jersey requires a New Jersey eighth-grade proficiency test that I believe New York does not take. That would signal to your high schools for your exit exams, so that they have certain number of years that if they are deficient, they can bring themselves up to speed so that they can pass. And it's like an early warning sign that I don't believe that New York has. And as far as I know, that's the only difference between New York and New Jersey.
Thank you, Linda Price. Mr. Poliselli, or any of the other candidates, do you desire additional rebuttal time? Michael, go ahead.
That's always one of the, one of the problems, I call it, with new members coming on. That report was public, and that always seems to be the problem. I mean, they, new members come on the board, and they see all the problems we have. They see that sixty percent of our decisions are mandated by the state. There's nothing you can do about that. And you have to go through that learning curve.
Jean Brown, any additional comments?
No, thank you.
Edwin Mielbeck, Linda.
No, thank you.
Okay, let's go to our next question. Kristin Sparanza of the Tri-State Gazette. Your question was, will be directed first to Jean Brown.
During the public hearing that was held recently on the Montague budget, there was some mention that the budget might go down because of the cap waiver and the modulators. And you had mentioned the need for the modulators. Would you suggest any other alternative to the modulators, or do you agree with what the action of the board has taken thus far?
After being in the school for a number of, I have attended many meetings, and after being in the school for a number of different functions with my niece and nephew, it certainly seems, according to even what Principal O'Peekin said, there is no way they are going to be able to do any kind of decent job in educating the children without those modulators. So I would see that it would definitely have to go to the commissioner, and we would just hope that he would rule in our favor as far as having the modulators be a part of the school system next year.
Mr. Mielbeck.
I agree that the modulators are needed as an interim relief for the overcrowdedness in the school. The big question is, is the people going to vote for the quarter-million-dollar expenditure? I think they have to be educated between now and the election that these modulators could be used as a future part of the addition that is proposed, and if it does go through on a referendum, it will give an additional four thousand square feet of space, which is desperately needed for the additional classroom for the overcrowded situation. I looked at the brochure that was provided by Mr. O'Peekin, and they seem to be very adequate, and they're acceptable to the state standards and Department of Education.
Linda Price.
These modulators are definitely needed. If we don't, we're talking split sessions, and nobody wants to see split sessions. I think the main problem is that people don't understand the funding of it. What I'm hearing through the grapevine is that certain people want to bond these as opposed to purchase them outright with their, yeah, what do you call it, surplus. It's six to one, half dozen the other. In this day of plastic, everybody goes and charges, and that's why the economy is in such trouble. I don't feel that the school board should be charging it when they can cash and carry. So I would say, yes, you definitely have to vote yes on these things, and if not, then the board has to go for Trenton's approval.
Michael Poliselli.
Well, there is no alternative, like one says. There's no alternative to the modulators other than split session. Nobody wants to see that. We don't want to go to that. We were brought to the brink of even, at one point a couple of years ago, of eliminating the kindergarten. We don't want to do that. And the board is made up of a lot of good people. If the budget goes down, I think we'd have to go through the process. We'd go before the town, and if we don't agree, we'd go and appeal to the commissioner. As far as purchasing versus bonding, once again, I'm on the board. So we've looked at both ends, and it was more economical to purchase. And we can prove that.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Jean Brown or any of the candidates? If not, we will go to a question for Edwin Mielbeck. This question will come from Tom Petrie.
Thank you, Paul. Next to the modular and how to pay for it question, and adding the seventh and eighth grades back to the Montague school, the hottest issue I have heard among Montague residents is of the recent contract reached with the chief administrator of the Montague School, a two-year contract with raises the next two years of seven and five percent. Next year, the salary would be approximately seventy-three thousand dollars. Starting with Mr. Mielbeck, do you support this kind of contract and these raises in these economic times?
Well, as far as the contract is concerned, I don't think they should have gone for a five-year contract. I think Mr. O'Peekin does an outstanding job. I've had the opportunity to observe him at several board meetings, and he certainly conducts his business properly and does his homework. And the salary he's receiving now is comparable to other superintendents of schools. However, I think you have to look at the size of the district and the amount of children that are in the school, and I think that his salary is certainly adequate for the size of the school district. The only question I would have is going for a five-year contract at this point in time.
Linda Price.
I was not part of the negotiations, but I would assume with that kind of an increase that it was a merit increase. What people seem to forget is that he is not an administrator for two-hundred-and-ninety-eight children, but close to five-hundred children, because he is responsible for the seventh through twelfth graders. As far as if they have problems, he has to be involved with the child study team. He has to fill out the umpteen reports that the state requires for K through twelve, not K through six. As far as, you didn't ask the question, but I'm assuming that people are going to ask it, what kind of bearing this has on the teachers' negotiations that are coming up. I don't feel that has any bearing whatsoever, because they're negotiating as a union contract. They do not get merit raises because of tenure. The good and the bad all get the same percentage, and I think that's where you're going to see your cost-effective negotiations.
Thank you, Linda Price. Michael Poliselli.
I support the contract. The chief school administrator cannot reach tenure no more. Going for the five-year contract, I thought was a good idea. The increase, he's well worth it. I mean, we see what he does, and he works very hard. And he's still more on the low side of the average of what a chief school administrator makes, and he's handling more kids than some other districts. So I felt the increase was warranted, and I was in favor of the five-year contract.
Thank you, Michael Poliselli. We turn to Jean Brown.
The way I would have to respond to that is that I think in a small district such as Montague, we certainly were quite adequate in terms of what we gave to Mr. O'Peekin. And I would have to agree that within the law of a three- to five-year contract, we were also very nice to him by giving him the full five years that could have been within the contract range. And basically, as far as his raise, it certainly was more than adequate.
Any additional comments from any of our other candidates? If not, we go to another question from Kristin Sparanza. Kristin, your question will go first to Linda Price.
Mrs. Price, one of the things I notice in attending school board meetings is some of them are not well-attended. And the big thing is to get the community involved. Maybe if the community was more educated about the budget process, et cetera, then they would get out to vote, because they would know exactly what they were voting for. How would you suggest getting the community more involved in the actions of the school board?
Honestly, changing the attitude of the board. I attend regularly, and when I raise my hand to question, the ayes roll. They try to limit me to my three minutes. I don't feel like I'm being appreciated or respected. It's almost like, okay, we have to listen to her, and maybe she'll go away. And I think a lot of people get that same cold feeling of, why should I bother? It doesn't make a difference anyway. But they're wrong, because you can make a difference if you just keep hounding them time and time again. Eventually, you will get your point across. And I think part of it is the public has to just keep at it, and the board has to be receptive to the public.
Thank you, Linda Price. Next candidate is Michael Poliselli.
Well, to bring more people out, it's a tough thing. And I think the only thing the board can do is try to educate through newsletters and stuff like that. And you can't make people get involved. You know, getting involved with putting the budget together and all, I'm still learning about that. That's a tough thing. It's a boring thing. And a lot of the things we go through, a lot of the motions we go through, we have parliamentary procedures and all, I guess becomes boring. You know, what can I say? If you have kids in the school, you know, this is the time to be heard. If people were to come out, we would certainly listen to them, and we would change any policy that anybody would feel that they were being stifled or anything.
Thank you, Michael Poliselli. Our next candidate is Jean Brown.
As far as having the public be involved, I think one of the reasons why I am running, and one of the reasons why anyone runs, is that they feel as if they represent some of the public. So not certainly that we don't, that they shouldn't be there, because I have attended meetings as just a citizen within the community. But I think it's very important that people understand that they not have to attend all of the meetings and not still have their particular feelings heard, because we do or should represent everyone within the district. I believe one of the areas that has to be dealt with, though, is when newsletters are sent home, they should be sent home not only to those families with students within the district, but to everyone who is a taxpayer, so that we all know what is going on.
Thank you, Jean Brown. We're suddenly going to get very warm. You may hear the heater going off in the background, but we welcome that. Let's turn to Edwin Mielbeck.
As far as the public attending the meetings, I myself have been guilty of that. Like I say, I've lived in the community for over thirty years, and it was only this past year that I got interested in running for the board and attended some of the meetings. In defense of the board, I want to say that the meetings I attended, they were very professional, well-run, and everybody had an opportunity to speak and express themselves. Unfortunately, there wasn't that many people at the meetings. The pay isn't very good, so, I mean, I don't think anybody is in it for renumeration or glory. You're in there to do a public service and make a better educational facility for the children of Montague, and also to bear in mind that the taxpayers of Montague have to have something that is going to be palatable for them.
Any additional responses to that question? If not, we remind our listeners that we are tuned to a live Meet the Candidates broadcast. You are listening to the four candidates for the Montague Board of Education. We have with us tonight Edwin Mielbeck, Linda Price, Michael Poliselli, and Jean Brown, four of the six candidates who will be running for, I believe it is, three seats. Is that correct? Okay. In the election, which apparently is going to be on April seventh. We have invited questions from the audience. We're going to take a couple of more questions from our reporters before we go to some other questions. If there are any other questions from the audience, please bring them out now, so we can screen these questions, and we will get to these questions in just a few moments. You're tuned to Meet the Candidates on WDLC and WTSX in Port Jervis. We are coming to you live from the Access Aid Television Studios on Franka Street in Port Jervis, now serving the Montague Township. And we remind those who are listening tonight and may want to go through it again and see what's happening, that this will be broadcast on Access Aid throughout their entire territory, including Montague tomorrow night. Let's turn back to our questions now, and our next question will go to Michael Poliselli. And Tom, I think you had the first question, and Michael last time, so we're going to ask Kristin to ask a question to Michael this time.
Mr. Poliselli, can you tell us, other than the land adjacent to the elementary school, which the board has decided to go ahead with for the referendum in the fall, what other land was looked at?
There was a number of sites. I'll give you a number. There was, I believe, seven other sites. And I really would rather not say which ones we looked at, because I'd be honest with you, a lot of this was discussed in closed session, and there's sunshine laws we had to hear through tonight. Couldn't even understand when we negotiated this. But there was several other sites. The one adjacent, as I had said, was not the perfect choice, I don't think. But we think it's the one that the voters will go for, and it would allow us to put an addition on the school rather than putting up another building.
Thank you, Michael Poliselli. Jean Brown.
Basically, that was an informational type of question, so it's difficult for me to respond to it. But I was at the meeting when they made the decision to use the land adjacent to the school, and from listening to all of the board members, it certainly seemed to me that they did their homework and came up with the best possible solution to that particular problem.
Thank you, Jean Brown. Edwin Mielbeck.
I think the board made a wise selection in making the decision to stay at the present site for the addition rather than purchase property and build a second school or a complete new school. You have the existing building there, which contains approximately twenty-four thousand square feet, and if they go with the modulators, you're going to pick up an additional four thousand square feet for a total of twenty-eight thousand square feet. And the board proposed, or has been in negotiations or planning with some engineers, to put on thirty-nine thousand square feet more at the present site. So it's quite a big undertaking that they have proposed.
Thank you, Edwin Mielbeck. Our next candidate is Linda Price.
I'm with Mrs. Brown. I didn't really understand that question.
Kristin, would you like to briefly?
I mean, are you asking my opinion on the adjacent?
I'm asking your opinion, yes.
On whether we should build next door?
I asked directly to Mr. Poliselli, because he's on the board currently. I asked directly to Mr. Poliselli, because he's on the board currently. But yes, I'd like your opinion.
Well, my opinion is, I really don't have enough information to give an educated opinion. Like Mr. Poliselli said, most of it was done behind closed doors. As far as I know, they looked at three pieces. One, you could just rule out immediately. The other one, you were talking a brand-new school, be it running a two-school district or a one-school district. And at this point in time, I don't care if they put it on Mars, as long as they get a school built that the taxpayers can afford, and it's good for the children.
Any additional responses to that question, Mr. Poliselli?
Yeah, I just, I don't, you know, behind closed doors, I didn't mean it that way. I know we looked at Latorre, there's another one down on River Road, the, what was the name?
Care.
Care. And I believe that was our second choice. Like I say, the reason why, this problem is not over. I mean, we're just looking at that property. Whether we can build on that is another story.
Any additional comments from any of the other candidates? If not, we'll go to our next question. A Tom Petrie question that goes first to Jean Brown.
All right, Mrs. Brown. Now, this is a question that I just screened that came in from a Montague citizen, and it has to do with building on-site. In light of a history of previous failed referendums for land acquisition, the defeated attempt two years ago for on-site expansion and past downscaled re-referendums whenever classrooms were to be added to the present school, how do you feel you can get the town's voters to support an adequate expansion now?
It obviously, for a new board member, is going to take some, a tremendous amount of education into what has gone on to all of these former expansion projects in terms of what the former boards have looked into, what they had to do to get the figures and all of the specifics for the building that was thought to be appropriate at that time, even though, of course, the referendum may have gone down. I hope to be able to do a job in terms of looking at what I believe is best from the educational point of view, from the economic point of view, and logically bringing it to the public, and hoping that they would understand that I would be working in their best interest. That's all we can expect.
Thank you, Jean Brown. Edwina Mielbeck.
I think the voters of Montague have to be educated. Like I say, I've been a resident for over thirty years, and many different budgets that I voted on, I was not in favor of also. However, something has to be done with the school. It's absolutely intolerable to have kids taught in that present situation. Some of the rooms that are being utilized are substandard. The administration part of the school is working out of trailers, and I think if the public is aware that the need actually is there rather than just somebody trying to build an empire, so to speak, that they will go for an addition that meets the educational needs, and nothing more elaborate or necessary.
Thank you, Edwina Mielbeck. Our next candidate, Linda Price.